Okay, I have seven o'clock. Welcome everybody to the council meeting here for July 7th. If we would please stand, we'll do a pledge and wait. Check, would you ladies in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, please bow our heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, please shine your grace upon us. Help us to make good decisions in this meeting. Help us to make good and wise decisions. Help to keep our meeting cordial and protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray, amen.
Okay, well, as I say, welcome to our meeting. We have Seth and Steve. Seth is not here, not on the phone, but Steve is on the phone. So we technically can have six, I suppose, so. Okay, I assume everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the prior meeting. Did anyone have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
No.
Seeing none, motion to approve. Seems approved, the second. Todd's the second, those in favor, raise your hand. And, and, and one verbal aye. So it'll be a motion carries, six oh.
I didn't see my hand go up.
Well, thank you, Steve. Okay, we have transfers, general fund, council and commissioners. Let's take a look here. We have, did everyone have a chance to go through and look at those? Did anyone have any comments or questions on any of that? Not a word, not a thing, nothing, okay. Well, if there's nobody having any comments or questions on the transfers, we'll take a motion to approve those as they were presented.
I'll make a motion except the transfers.
Motion to approve transfers, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, those in favor, taking advantage by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion opposed, motion carries, okay. All right, then we have some additionals. There were a few more there, and I think they probably do warrant a question or two. Fair point. Did anyone have any direct comments or questions about what they saw in the additionals? I know that probation had an item. Greg's here. Was, was there anything else in there? I know emergency management, you had a question on that. It was masks, I understood it to be, so.
Was it all masks? Was it all masks?
Probably. Protected gear?
Yes.
Okay. And then in the rainy day, the loan to the regional sewer district is on there. That's a big number, it says 500,000. That was covered in our prior meeting, and so that's there now. It's in documentation form. Part-time probation officer Greg, I mean, did anyone want to cover that in greater detail? You're looking to have a person retire, and then you're wanting to have some monies allocated to a part-time?
Correct.
But then you're wanting to budget that into the next cycle.
We're going to explain that more during the budget process. Again, go a little more detail with that. Right now, just guess we'll be in the year.
And, okay, so, did anyone have anything? That was 14,946 dollars, so.
Mike, can you repeat what he said? I couldn't hear.
Oh, sure, yes. He, he has a part-time position that he's wanting to do an additional for. He has a full-time probation officer that's retiring, and so he's looking at budget time to add a part-time position going into the next year and replacing the full-time as well, correct? Okay, so he's adding half a man, more or less. At budget time, however. Okay, and then as far as the surveyor, he had a copier. I don't think that's an issue for anyone unless there's somebody had a comment on that. Nothing there? Piece of cake, so.
I do have one question, might be addressed to Roy in regards back to the rainy day.
Sure.
On that promissory note, that, that's the plan, right? We're still heading towards a promissory note for?
The plan was, what was attached was an ex, I understand, an example of the promissory note. So it was approving a line of, basically a line of credit up to 500,000, and then anytime there was going to be a draw on that, RSD would sign the note. For the amount of that draw.
So the note will be, as far as to the county, will be first in line though, right? As far as any issues that would ever come up in the future in that promissory note, or how?
The promise, the way it'll work is that we will then now move forward with projects to get basically grant funding. So when they do a bond, the county is first to be paid back with that bond.
I thought you meant first in line like?
Well, if it did go into receivership or something of that nature in this.
You, you could be that too, yes.
Okay, we just want to make sure it's taxpayers' money, that if something did go bad, we're?
Exactly.
You know, you know how that all works at all.
Absolutely.
Yeah, those notes, those notes were payable when they received financing from another source. I assume in the, in the, in the order in which they were issued, but, but it could be, I don't know, if they borrowed 28,000 dollars, you got a grant for 28,000. It would seem to indicate that's probably the note that'll be paid off.
Yes, that's the intention. Initially, this, what this, what this line of credit does is it affords the sewer district to proceed with the preliminary engineering to move those projects forward, that then SRF will score those projects, and at the time that they score them, they'll assign a grant value to it. And that monies will then be what they'll allocate towards us, which then gives us the ability to generate rate for those that are going to be served by the sewer district. And once that is set in motion with the funding source, you know, Baker Tilly in this particular case, they would bond, go out and look for bonding, and once that bonding is complete, the county would have its money back.
And it's still a two-year?
We, we suspect it's spring of 2021 is where that will take us. I know initially, we're, we're going to actually conduct public hearings next on the areas that we're planning to serve. And so that project, because the council went ahead and did their part for the loan portion of it, we can go full steam ahead now to proceed with servicing those areas. So as I said, time was of the essence. It does bring it to light, that allocation. It's not that we're spending 500,000, we're not even close to that. It was just basically the estimate that would guarantee moving the sewer district to the place of a bond and being able to go ahead and repay the county. So, and at the same time, put sewer, vital sewer services in the areas that are, that are needing it.
Like I said, make sure we.
My recollection was each of those notes has a time period for payment, but that's also triggered earlier by, you know, the other sources.
Yeah, like I said, just making sure we got eyes dotted.
Whatever comes first.
Absolutely, absolutely. Did you have anything to add to that, Steve?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, well, well.
It's hard for me to hear the conversation.
Sorry, sorry about that. I don't know if we can do much more for you, but.
Yeah, that's, it's okay.
Okay.
I can hear you very well. It's hard, everybody else is broken.
Okay. Well, that, that is the big number that's there. So it certainly warrants more review, or at least conversation at minimum. But as I see it, the sewer district's going to go forward, and, and it will conduct those projects, and it will take place. So the state wants it. Again, if there's a four to five million dollar grant that that 500,000 dollar brings to Wells County, I look at that as a great dollar accelerator. So, and at the same time, cleans up some waterways. So I'm sure the surveyor would say that's a good idea, so.
That's not, he's not my servant.
I, I would bet you might have seen a tile with less than clear water in it, though. So, okay. Well, with that in mind, was there anything else in there that people had a comment or question on? As far as the additionals go? If, if there's nothing more there, I would ask a motion to approve the additionals as presented then.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the additionals, is there a second?
A second.
Motion's made a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We're doing it a little different with the telephone, so. Okay, so that takes care of the additionals. The sheriff is not here. So no sheriff today. He, he didn't give that paperwork to anybody either to look at for the jail. But you said there were 60 people in the jail?
Yes, this morning there were 60.
60?
60.
Okay. Okay, well, if nothing else there, then we'll go with Tim Ramsey from Bye County.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, sir. This is Bye County Services Annual Report.
Thank you.
Funding request. I think you wanted again.
I was going to take one of your hands.
And financial update. One thing that was added to this is the very last page is a cash flow document. It's something that I've provided in the past, and I think it's important.
Sure.
Current financial conditions, so, anyway. We're here to request the 49,312 that we've asked for for 20, 25 years.
That's a pretty consistent number, Tim. One of the rare occasions for the exact same number.
Yeah, yeah, so. It's been a difficult year. Really, our, our number one challenge is staffing. We're down quite a few staff right now, and through the staff is how we generate our income. So that affects us there. The other thing is our residential beds. We had four actually that were empty that when presented to you last year, which that's a substantial amount of money. This is about 7,500 dollars per bed per month.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's substantial amount of money. We actually have two of those filled. We have a third one ready to be filled, and that person actually is still waiting, but the COVID thing came in about a week before we were ready to finish that process, and it hasn't started back up yet. So as soon as the state starts that process, which they have to come into the home, actually review the whole situation and then approve it. And we're hoping within the next few weeks, I would think that maybe we have that phone schedule when it's done. So, you know, that would take us through the three out of four. And then the COVID-19 situation too, also shut down our day services, which we serve 70 to 95 people per, per day, per week, and then five days a week. So that shut that down, so that affects our revenue also. So it's just been a combination of a bunch of things.
Are you open now, or back in action?
Yeah, we, day services, actually, I think we have up to, and I was just talking about, to Joyce about this yesterday. She's our program director. Some days we have up to like 20 people that have come back. We've slowly expanded this, but we're being very careful, very safe about this. We have a big facility, so we can really spread people out. And so the social distancing is not a, a big issue or anything for us to do that. But we want to go slow and take it safe. And we're actually very progressive compared to other providers in the state. A lot of them haven't even started their day services programs back up yet, you know, so. But it's important from a mental health standpoint. Any of us just sitting at home staring at walls all the time is, is not a good thing. So as fast as we can bring our people back and have the activities and events and everything that we do, the better.
Sure, absolutely.
Last year, we lost 144,000 dollars, but if you look at that compared to a depreciation of about 260,000 dollars, you know, as far as the cash out of the bank and stuff, there was very little cash that was, that was reduced and stuff. So we actually did good there. We're tracking a larger loss this year due to all the things that we were talking about and that, but we'll see how that turns out. A lot of times it changes right there at the end or whatever. But financially, we're in very good shape. We have, we have, you know.
A good reserve.
Our reserves and stuff are very good, and, and so we are managing our money well. And, and plus too, our expenses have gone down through all of this also. So that's something to help reduce some of that loss also.
Sure.
But, but yeah. It's been a tough year, but still.
Still plugging away at it, absolutely.
We're still going, so doing well, actually, considering all of the different challenges, so.
Okay, does, does anyone have any other questions for Tim? Okay.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Because I was in financing.
Sure.
Guess what? First thing I always look for.
Yeah. One of the finance guys in Adams County last year asked me for that. And I thought, you know what? It's something that we do every, every month, so why not just provide it?
Yeah, as soon as I seen that, that's where I started.
You know, that's a quick review on.
Everything.
In a minute, yeah.
And I, and I guess those, those, the negatives on the investments have come back now. That probably was a matter of a picture in time.
Our investments are actually of the highest available.
Is that right?
If you can believe that.
Well, you know, the recovery was. The recovery was real on the, on the stock market, so clearly where you have it as a not wonderful at the moment, I'm sure it's improved in the last couple of months, so.
Yep, they have.
Very good. Well, yeah, I appreciate you coming in, Tim.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have Roy for an approval of right-of-way purchase. And this would be for the Hoosier extension or the realignment.
I'm here for council to approve the third of three purchases for the Hoosier right-of-way, Hoosier Highway right-of-way at, in Bridge 99, I believe, as replacement. We've already, you've already approved the first two, and we've closed those, and we're subject to your approval, going to shortly close the third transaction.
And, and this was? This is the gasp one, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and the purchase price is 2,100 dollars.
Does anybody have any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward. I know we're looking at the south corridor and proceed, and this is part of that to do that, so.
I'm, I'm pretty happy on how smooth everything's been going, Roy, so kudos to you, and, yeah.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
We're not digging yet, but.
Won't be back for anymore.
Okay, so a motion to approve this, and this will take care of it, and then it has a, there's nothing else to do other than just make a motion for it, correct?
2020-12.
2020 dash 12?
Yes.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve this ordinance of dash, or 2020 dash 12.
I'll make that motion to approve the purchase of the land, um, ordinance 2020 dash 12.
There's been a motion made, is there a second? There's been a second, a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Roy.
Sorry for the confusion about ordinances and resolutions.
It's okay.
Copy of the statute, so, pedal over what statute you're looking at.
Well, how many times do we buy land, right? Not that often, so. Okay, now, the second one is a consideration of purchase for property. This is a resolution, and this, this relates to the Highway Garage project.
Yes, yes.
So, and I'll, I'll state right now that, that at this point, they're looking for an appraisal on a property that I own, and so I'm not going to vote. I'll, I'll not vote on that topic, but I'll let Roy go through the details of what he has in front of you, and you can look at that if there's questions.
I think we've gone through this twice already in terms of what steps the county has to go through to purchase real estate. Unlike what you just approved, which was under 50,000 dollars, we didn't have to go through that. But if it's over 50, the commissioners have, commissioners as purchasing agents have to seek a resolution from council, the fiscal body, to declare that the county is interested in purchasing a particular tract of real estate. And that's what we're here for tonight. This resolution is a little different, well, a lot different, I guess, in that it involves also a potential swap of county-owned property, which then mucks up things about, well, what do you have to do to go through steps to sell county property? Well, when you're swapping it, we have to follow the same statute, except we obviously don't auction it, because we're, we already got our potential buyer identified. So the commissioners are seeking a resolution that the county is interested in buying, and I will point out, this is a 40-some acre tract. And we, we have nothing signed, but we're, we're wanting to.
Explore, they're exploring.
Yeah, but the county, the county wants to look into acquiring that, and then we'll go on from that as far as how we structure that, what we buy, what we have an option to purchase or write a first refusal or whatever. But first step is, let's identify the real estate. So we're here for that purpose. And set out the legal description for the target property, also the legal description for the present county garage that we might potentially trade. And then we've set out the statute. I also set out the trader exchange on page three, so you can see that. So that's what we're here for.
And the objective is to get values set on those items, so that there's a, a clear appraised value, as they would do in any other event.
Right.
Two appraisals, correct?
Ordin, well, yes, two, and, and in fact, the commissioners designated three, because one time we asked two people and one guy declined, so.
Okay.
So they left it with, here's three, and first two you could get to commit, and we'll, we'll have them appraise the target real estate as well as the present county property. So we have the same people looking at and giving us values. Because those values in terms of, of the county acquiring property, we can't pay any more than the average of those two appraisals.
And, and I will, I will say that, you know, initially, in the COVID situation, there was a notion to just delay the highway project, but, the highway garage. But I'm going to take a step forward again and say, let's not let that be a limiting factor with this project. It's long overdue. It's definitely something that needs to be done, and I would like to see us at least have steps put into motion. It may not be for six months, a year, two years, three years, but my objective with this is that we take steps to move the ball forward. It doesn't mean we're building anytime today, tomorrow, or the next day, but before I'm gone, I would like for us to at least take the steps that will get that project finished.
Will said, and I concur with that also.
I mean, if we don't do it today, we're at least in a position to be moving forward to do it. And at the same time, I still want to double down and sell the county farm to help fund that project. So my intention is to ask or recommend the commissioners make a move to make that happen, to start the ball rolling as well. So again, that's what this is about. So I guess if anyone has questions, Steve, did you hear that pretty clearly?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And I concur that I want to keep that ball rolling as well.
Yeah, I, I would say that, that commissioners have talked about the county farm and realize that if this happens, that may well be a good decision to make. But first steps first is.
Absolutely.
Property. But in response to some, some questions asked in prior meetings, we were talking about other sites. Some council members were saying, well, what are you going to do? We, we just going to buy real estate and let it sit? We, we don't intend to do that at all.
No, so, so as I said, my goal is before I'm out, we're going to drive this thing as hard as possible. So to get at least an agreement that we're going to make it happen. So, so if anyone has any other questions or comments on this, they're, we're open to them at the moment, Jim?
I got one question. You, it's all for the 40 acres. Are you, when you guys decide what you're doing, or you don't go back to council again with that? Or are we passing it right now?
You're not, you're, you're passing a resolution designating the 40. How we go about doing that, we need to negotiate that. But I don't want to buy 10 with an option for another 10, and then come back and say, oh, let's designate the east half. Just want to go for the whole enchilada. So we got it designated, get it appraised, and then we can negotiate.
Don't worry, Jim, I'm not selling them 40. That's not going to happen.
It's just the appraisal side of it, that's what we're doing.
Right, this is just to set values.
There's no purchase.
Yeah, there's no purchase, all we're doing.
One other time, make sure we're.
Right. This is entirely just to start the ball rolling for them to take action, to at least move the ball forward for setting values, to determine where they can go, and ultimately how it can work, so.
Which I don't have for all, and I just want to make sure.
Sure. Yes, sir.
You mentioned the county farm, are we looking to get an appraisal for that piece as well?
That would be for the commissioners to decide at this point, and that's, Blake, he happens to be in the room. That's up to Blake to comment if he chooses to. Blake?
It was brought up, however, this step needs to happen first, before we bring that up.
They're, they're discussing that, but it's not at a stage where they're ready to go do anything more. They want to get this ball rolling first before they take that next step.
So this is a resolution to get commissioners' ability to go get appraisals on?
Yes.
Correct?
It, it, it's, it's to get an appra, two appraisals on the property that I own.
And, and the.
And, and the highway garage if I elect to swap it.
But, but this is to get those appraisals?
Yes.
Yes, got it.
Yeah, the statute doesn't say the county council's supposed to decide to get it appraised.
Right.
You designate the property, commissioners have to get it appraised, and they have to provide you with copies of those appraisals.
Right. Now, this is step one of, of 10 steps, so. And then, and no action will be taken on it, other than the appraisals at that point. And then there'll be something to talk about for what step's worth. You know, initially, I said I would donate the land, but I guess I'm not going to be here for that, so. We're reevaluating now. Elections had consequences, I guess, so.
Well, I, I think that the property and its, and its location has real advantages right there on 200, and it's a good site, and, and.
Ultimately, it'll be on, ultimately where the south corridor goes. And that has a lot of value that way, too. So it, unless Blake has a, a better option, and they're certainly open to that notion, but there's not been a lot of people coming forward yet.
Not with the contingencies of that, we took two appraisals.
Right. Right. So unless there's any other comment or question with regard to this, and what resolution number does this one? This one is resolution 2020 dash 07. So does anyone have any other comment or question? If not, well, there's a motion to approve this resolution, 2020 dash 07.
I will make a motion to approve resolution 2020 dash 07 for the appraisal.
There's a motion to the appraisal, Vicki made a second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Is it a nay? Motion carries six oh. I heard, I heard Steve on the phone.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Roy.
Thank you, Roy.
Carries five one, or five zero one.
One.
Oh, yes.
Oh, wait, six.
That's six oh.
Five.
Well, who is the note?
Were you going to abstain?
Oh, I'm going to abstain, that's right. I, I asked Roy about that, and he says, as long as I divulge what was taking place, I could have voted, so.
Okay.
I can take it either way. I can, I can abstain, or I can vote, either one.
We'll vote.
According to the attorney that's in the room.
Yep, you voted, so we'll vote.
I'll vote.
So now it's six oh?
It's going to stay six oh. All right, so now miscellaneous business, I didn't have any, other than there's a declaration of the fiscal body from the Wells County Library. Now, you can read what that is or what, what this involves.
A new law, all libraries need to declare their fiscal body for binding review, and we just need council to declare that they are the fiscal body for the library.
But when you say binding review, I guess I want clarity.
You said unbinding or binding?
She says binding.
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 So we are bound to review it, but we don't really have any engagement with it.
Is this still based upon a percentage of where their budget's at? If it's above a certain percentage, then we can interact. But if we don't, then we can't touch it. Yeah, I mean, we can't make a decision for them, the way I would understand.
Unless it's above the budget.
It's over that ratio. There's a ratio that's used. That's the way I've always understood it, but still.
Sure. Okay. So with that declaration, is there anything we need to do with that further, or they're just making a statement and we...
Right, you have to sign. So far, I have a motion that you can sign that document.
Okay. So there's a, so there's resolution, oh, that's their resolution.
That's their resolution.
Okay. Okay. So I guess is there a motion to approve a declaration of the fiscal body for the Wells County Public Library? Whoever wants to.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, there's a motion?
I'll say aye.
Jim has a second. Okay, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
6, she seconded it. 6-0. Okay, so I can sign that, I guess.
You can sign that, yep.
We'll do it right now.
Give you the authority.
I'm authorized.
Is the library now comes back in front of us again, or is that...
Only if...
Only if.
If they're over a certain percentage in their increase in their budget, the way I was understanding.
From the previous budget.
From the previous budget.
They used to, they had to come and...
Well, remember when we used to do...
And the schools, too.
Yeah. Unbinding reviews to everybody, and then that is...
That's all gone.
Definitely lasted a couple of years.
They passed it on somehow.
That's all I have.
That was all part of the...
Okay. Do we want to do an appointment, or we don't need to yet? What do you want to do?
We can do it next meeting.
We'll do the next meeting.
Or we can do it this meeting, it doesn't matter.
Well, we have, we have our library board, two representatives for the council. One of them is, her term is...
She's expiring.
Expiring in August.
Yes.
Kim Jennings. And I will say that I was interested in whether people want to look into putting someone maybe on council on that library board. You know, it's one of the things that in boards that have the option for tax revenue, it just seems like the fiscal body here would be able to serve the library better by actually someone on this panel serving on that library board.
Did Roy say he can? I know there's some we cannot.
I haven't, I had not discussed with anybody whether...
You can or can't.
...a commissioner or, I know Richard Barr on some boards.
Right.
Maybe corrections, I'd have to look and see.
Should we wait and do this next?
We can wait. I know that Lisa asked Sarah about it, and as long as they're not a relative, then it's fine.
That's what I said, is there any stipulations on who is appointed to the board? And she said, as long as it's not a relative of mine, it doesn't matter. But I didn't ask specifically about a council member.
Well, I know when Trent was, when he was county attorney, you know, he was also library board attorney. And he's a library board, and I said, no, I can't, because my wife was on at that time, was on the board trustees and being presumably the direct line of supervision of the library board attorney. So I know we've got those considerations, but...
I was going to say, as long as I've been, I've never known a kind of council member on that board since I've been here. But it's not the same.
They have a, it just seems that they are a board that there's no elected person serving on a board that receives tax revenues, and then...
How did the other members, how are they appointed from different?
Well, the commissioners have...
Commissioners have one, county council, school board has three. But since, but since the, since there's more than one school corporation in the county, I think, they left Harrison as the situs for the government, appoints two. And then it was my understanding, Sutterwells and Orwell may rotate.
Yeah, same.
How many is on the board, do you know?
That I don't know. I know the commissioners have the one, and we have two. And one of ours is up in August. So...
And I think that, I just looked at that tonight, Mike asked me the question, so I downloaded the 2020 Indiana Coon version of that. And I looked to see about two appoints of board members. And I think there were two more, but it said two more members appointed by and it's referring to some of the sites, so I don't know.
Maybe hold off a month might not be a bad idea.
I'm okay with doing that. But I, I don't think that would be a problem to hold off a month. But as I said, I personally feel that it's appropriate, that they elect to receive taxpayers' revenues, that there should be an elected person on that board as at least a measure. We have two people that we're designating for it. Why couldn't it be council, is my view. If we're picking other people, it seems we could pick our own people.
The only, the only other consideration that comes to me very quickly would be, is it a lucrative office?
[laughing] It is not. It is not. Okay.
From experience on it, or?
No, just, I know that it is not.
Yeah. But there's, I mean, again, when Trent was discontending his county attorney, he says, well, I don't think you can be on the election board anymore, because that's two lucrative offices. So I started looking for the attorney general's opinions and case on defining what's a lucrative office. Then looked at the statute, commissioners' section of the Title 36, and county councils' section or chapter 36, the last section in that says the attorney for the commissioners, attorney for the county council is not a lucrative office.
Well, that's good to know that you're not making millions here, Roy.
I didn't say, and, pal.
Okay. Well, we'll...
It's in the statute, it's not a lucrative office.
We'll leave it to next month to do that appointment. Is that all right with you, Steve?
I agree with that. So Seth and I can wait, because it's hard for us to hear the comments.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, Seth is not on the line. So, okay, well, if that's where we'll leave that. You can look into that for us as well, Roy. Okay, so at next meeting, we'll get a legal opinion.
I don't know if you, the council in the past, has advertised.
We have, and it is advertised at the moment. So, yes, it is advertised. So, well, if that's the case, I have nothing further. I guess, you know, we'll be looking at our budgets next month. So with that, I don't have anything else, unless anyone does as well.
As I say, we'll have a state meeting before.
Yes, we'll have one more meeting before. So, well, if there's nothing else, we'll have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Chuck seconds? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Thank you.